Good evening, everybody, and happy St. Patty's Day. This is a city council meeting, regular meeting for March 17th, 2025. Please stand for the invocation as Stephen Valentine, Associate Pastor of the Mount Zion Restoration Branch, will give the invocation. And please remain standing as we do the pledge of allegiance.
Our most kind and loving Heavenly Father, as we come before this meeting, Lord, we do ask for your guidance and your direction. We ask Heavenly Father that we come with open minds and a willingness to serve. Lord, we have a beautiful city, and we are proud of it, and we would ask Heavenly Father that we might be vigilant as we work together. Be ever mindful, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Per-- I'm sorry, Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
We are all here and candid for. That brings us to citizens' requests. First one up, Lee Phillips, Go Bond.
Hello.
You will have five minutes, too.
Thank you kindly for that. Lee Phillips, Independence, Missouri. For those who have ears, let them hear. My fellow citizens, our city faces significant financial challenges. Tonight, I raise key questions and offer a practical solution. On April 8th, you will be asked to vote on $197 million general obligation bond. This bond would shape our community's financial future for the next 20 years. It's important that we fully understand its impact, not only for today, but for future generations. Despite increased revenue from multiple new taxes over recent years, financial problems persist. Have our past decisions set us on a path toward financial stability, or are we repeating the same mistakes? Consider these key points. With significant street tax revenue collected over the years, what improvements have been made? And why do critical infrastructure projects like the Kentucky Road and Chrysler Bridges remain unfinished? In April 23, voters approved a marijuana sales tax specifically dedicated to public safety. How has that been funding been used to enhance public safety, and why was nearly half of the $800,000 collected redirected to a square development project instead? How can we ensure that future funding aligns with the purposes approved by the voters? Tax increment financing, or TIFs, are meant to encourage, excuse me, economic growth by using expected future tax revenues to fund development projects upfront. However, if that growth doesn't happen as planned, taxpayers must cover the shortfall, leaving the community responsible for unanticipated costs. The Bass Pro Shops TIF, for example, resulted in a $17 million loss, demonstrating the financial risk associated with these projects. Given these established patterns, how can we be assured that future funds approved by voters will be used as the people intended? And how will bond funds be monitored to ensure that they are used as promised and deliver intended benefits to our community? While some may assume the state strictly regulates how bond funds are spent, Missouri law only requires cities to register their bonds and submit financial reports with minimal oversight at the state level. There is no formal mechanism ensuring that bond money is allocated as promised to voters. Given these concerns, some communities have explored independent reviews to ensure financial integrity. Could a state-led forensic audit provide the transparency needed to assess whether current resources are managed effectively before taking on additional debt? Understanding how these funds are managed is essential to making informed financial decisions for our community. Ladies and gentlemen, while some seniors may qualify for a property tax freeze, this does not mean they are shielded from the financial effects of this bond. Increased tax collections will still impact our community, influencing services, utility rates, and the overall costs of living. The flyers being sent out highlight some aspects of the bond, but don't fully explain how it could affect seniors beyond just property taxes. It is important to look at the bigger picture and understand all the financial impacts before making a decision. When you cast your vote on April 8th, consider this: Is this bond truly necessary, or should we first evaluate how previous funds have been managed? As I mentioned before, a state-led forensic audit would identify waste, fraud, or mismanagement, guarantee funds are used for their intended purpose, and restore public trust by providing independent accountability. A state-led forensic audit could provide clear answers and reassure the public that funds are being used as intended. Before April 8th, I urge you to ask yourselves, is this bond necessary, or can we more responsibly manage what we already have? Transparency and accountability aren't optional; they are essential. Make an informed decision on April 8th, demand clarity and responsibility from our city leaders. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. Up next, we have Becky Haye, regarding fire station bond.
I'm here to talk about the bonds that were spoke about in January 6th meeting for the three new fire stations. First, I completely support our Fire Department as well as our Police Department, and believe they deserve to work in a good work environment. But I do have some concerns. My concerns are with the bonds and the ability to pay them back. It was stated that we would be issuing $43.8 million in bonds, and that 40 million would come from the fire protection tax and $3.8 million from the marijuana tax. I know that in 2021, we voted to increase the Fire Protection Act to 0.5%. The marijuana tax was to go for public service, but in the January meeting, it stated that the 3.8 million would be funded from the police project fund. Not sure. And primarily from the revenues of the marijuana tax. So what other taxes will be used to secure these bonds? Back in 2021, when we issued three new bonds to make payment on the Cracker Net Creek TIF, the city had to use our street improvement tax, our park improvement tax, our stormwater tax, and our health and recreation property tax, as well as some other items, to secure the bonds and make them sellable. We all know that these issues are some of the same issues that are on the GO bond issue now because of lack of finances to keep up with maintenance. And I do not want to see this happen to our police stations or our fire stations. The fire protection tax is supposed to maintain all stations, equipment, as well as fully manning our fire department. With the balance of the funding that will be taken from the police project and then delay needs for our police department, are these taxes based on our sales taxes? In our last budget meeting, the city presented graphs that showed that our sales tax were declining, and we're expected to continue to decline over the next few years. How will this affect the needs of our fire department and our police department, and the deferred maintenance on all of our buildings? Because we have several stations that are quite old. Also, back in 2021, in the study session for the Bonds for the Cracker Net Creek TIF, it was said that you could not attach service taxes to the bonds, specifically police and fire tax. Would that not be true to apply to these bonds? These bonds, unlike the GO bonds, we will not be voting on. They will not raise our taxes because we've already voted for this tax. I strongly urge the city to look at these issues, think about how much deferred maintenance there will be over the next 20 to 50 years that it takes to fully pay off these bonds, and what will happen to our existing stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, David Morgan, Green Light Dispenser.
I'll pass these down.
Left for 15 years, and I get back, and Green Light Dispenser signs are on coming from East West on I-70. The signs should be removed. I don't know why they are there. Some people could be offended. When I was young, we cruised Doolin Road. Seen that marijuana users are roaming Nolan Road. Now, young kids will have to go back to wine and the clock on the square, as my mother said they used to do, unless they want to hang out with their marijuana users. You are setting a precedent by doing this. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes citizens' requests. We do not have any proclamations, no proclamations. Reading this to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem.
Councilman Fears.
I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Does anyone wish to pull any items for consideration? Councilwoman McCandless.
Thank you. Item number five.
Number five. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Here.
Three under resolutions.
Number three under resolutions. Resolutions. Got it. Mayor, did you have anything?
I did. If you could pull number two and number six for me, please. Thank you.
Okay, well, go with the order the best we can, but before that, if there's no others that need to be withdrawn, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCandless, number five, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have spent a number of study sessions and other conversations around the National Frontier Trails Museum. This is a really unique and special aspect of the history of Independence. We moved our National Frontier Trails Museum from the Railroad Track area, and that became the Model Railroad Association's headquarters, and have moved it into the Truman Memorial Building. And you'll actually see that sign on the side of Truman Memorial. I think actually it has better visibility in that site, and I really appreciate the work that staff has done to make that possible. The next conversation is, what does this museum, what is it when it grows up? Is there an opportunity to have a standalone museum that is a wonderful attraction for the city of Independence? I know there's a lot of people who would like that to happen. The staff put together an RFP for proposals to look at a feasibility study for this project. They did a wonderful job. We had fantastic applicants. However, I feel like we are currently committed to many important projects at this point, so taking on an additional one right now feels like overreach for the city. And I think we have some additional financial questions coming for the budget. So for that reason, I am going to recommend that we postpone this item indefinitely, take a chance to look at it in six months or so, and make additional decisions at that time. So my motion is for postponing indefinitely.
I'll second. The motion and seconded. Any discussion? Councilwoman McCandless, would you like to set a date now, in six months, around September?
I, that would be fine. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Then September it is.
So Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, porn avoider.
Yes.
Are we postponing it indefinitely, which means forever, or are we postponing it for six months to a date certain? I think that would be helpful.
Well, I would.
The motion currently is to postpone it indefinitely, which means it sends, it's suspended until someone brings it back. And that can happen either by direction of you all or its staff, which is hanging out there. The difference, the alternative would be to postpone to a date certain, which means that it will be back on the agenda at whatever that date is without further action from you all. So it currently, the motion, what was motioned and seconded was a motion to suspend it indefinitely, but that's up to you all.
Well, I apologize for the confusion, Councilwoman. I'll defer to your wishes.
I think I'm going to stick with postpone indefinitely, and then we will work with staff to see when it's the appropriate time to bring it back, if that's fair.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Motion has been approved, so Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll for postponing indefinitely?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes.
Motion is postponed. Councilwoman Wiley, resolution number three.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I move to approve 25-731, a resolution supporting the establishment of an animal cruelty task force for Independence, Missouri.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes.
Motion carries. That leads us to Mayor, number two, under Reports and Recommendations of City Manager.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on this. I would like to discuss as a group adding some addendums to this, if we could. And we won't do it tonight, but I think it's important for us to discuss is, you know, when we have a payment over $1 million on liability insurance, I would like to see that the city council gets the opportunity to approve the payment prior to it being extended by the insurance company. And I recognize that when you put a policy together, that you in fact waive that right to the insurance company. I was going to ask Mr. Cover if I could, Mayor Pro Tem, a question on that, to say if I'm correct on that, if we do in fact waive our rights when we buy the policy, that they could settle the claim without us being aware of the results of that claim.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we need to make a motion for approval first.
Please, I'll be happy to. I please make a motion for item number two to be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mayor's comments. Mr. Cover, are you able to? Did you hear that? Did that come through enough of the questioning?
The mayor is correct, I mean, in that with the type of liability policy that the city have, which is common, the city has, you know, say, in what happens, up to our self-insured retention, which is essentially our deductible, on any given claim. And beyond that, it is up to the, you know, after that point, it's the insurance company's money, and the insurance company gets to decide how a claim is handled at that point, whether it's settled or not, or how, any sort of decisions at that point is up to the insurance company because it's outside of our responsibility. So yes, we do give that up as part of our policy, and that's a standard provision of any sort of liability policy.
Thank you, Mr. Cover, and I do agree with you on that. And I have talked to Charles Worth and Associates, and they have said that we, as a city council, could ask for that to be amended, so that if the insurance company is in fact going to make a settlement, that we could know that before they make the final settlement, and that we could in fact see the settlement agreement. So I'll be putting together a resolution and bringing that forth to the city council so that we can consider that as a body, how we'll handle our liability claims going forward, and what we'll do in that regard. So I just wanted to do that. That was the only comment that I had on that. I would move for item number two to be approved, and just any discussion from anyone, I'm happy to have the discussion.
Sure. Councilwoman McCandless, did you see one?
Yes, I just had a clarifying question for Mr. Cover, if I may.
Yes, please.
Thank you. If we were self-insured, then we would have control over the way settlements were done, the way they were defended, et cetera. Is that a fair assessment?
If we were self-insured, we would have 100% control over the entire process. Currently, as it stands now, we have control essentially up until, you know, unless and until we meet the self-insured retention, at which point, it's not that we don't, we can still, you know, give our say. We can tell the insurance company, you know, if, you know, what they can ask us, or we can unsolicited tell them what we think about, you know, how a claim should be processed or handled. But once we've reached that point, again, that's why we have insurance, is because we, at a certain point, we want it, we want them to be on the hook and not us. And because they're on the hook, they're the ones that get to make the call. So I can't say that we couldn't try to do something different. As I think you all are aware, this is a new carrier that we're proposing to go with, so we don't have any sort of relationship with them now. So I can't say whether or not they, you know, how open they would be to what the mayor's proposing, but we can certainly have that discussion.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Anyone else? Before we call the roll to vote, Mr. City Manager, can you frame what we are actually discussing here? I think there may be two bits of conversation here of what the mayor is requesting, and then actually what we are voting on here as a package.
Certainly. So tonight, what's being recommended to the council is a contract for services with a company to provide casualty and liability insurance for the city of Independence. An organization of our size, over 1,000 employees, full-service city, and engaging in all manner of services and serving 123,000 residents. There are probabilities of people becoming injured, disabled, death, and/or litigation being necessary to resolve differences of opinion. This is the insurance coverage for all of those kinds of activities that I have just mentioned. Our current carrier, our policy with them expires April 1st. So last week, we had the study session for you all to hear from our insurance advisor as to why we were making this recommendation, and then, of course, tonight is asking the council to approve that so we can make sure we're covered after March 31st.
Okay. Any questions for the city managers as we proceed? Not hearing any. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes.
Carries? Mayor, number six, under Reports and Recommendations?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move for number six to be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please.
If I may, ask the city manager a question, kind of clarifying oversight on this. Some people might not know what this does, and I just want some clarification from Mr. City Manager on what number six is and what it does and things like that. So, Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind, kind of, for everybody that's watching that doesn't know maybe the details of this, if you could expand upon that, please?
Yes. As the city has been evaluating all of our facility maintenance needs, one of those that has been looked at is the current city hall facility. The costs of renovating our existing building were approximately $581 a square foot when we last had that analyzed. The city was able to acquire with council approval in January of 2024 the former GEHA office building located on Jackson Drive at the corner of Little Blue Parkway and Interstate 70. The council approved a lease purchase agreement, so that out we borrowed up to $20 million. We acquired that building for just a little more than $9 million. So back to my square footage comment, whereas this would have cost $581 a square foot to renovate slightly over $200 a square foot in acquisition price for that building. The remaining amount of that proceeds was borrowed to make improvements to the facility to convert that from a commercial office building to a municipal office building. So we are, for example, moving our Independence Utility Center employees into this facility as part of our facility plans for the Independence Police Department. This contract, for example, is creating the customer service area for people to come into that building and be able to transact their business, pay their bills, get utility counseling, et cetera. So tonight, that action is awarding that contract for those services to the firm McCown Gordon, based on staff's procurement process, evaluation of qualifications, et cetera.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to get a sense of it for folks who, you know, are watching, don't know, you know, they don't know the extent of that, and that was excellent. Thank you very much for that explanation. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I have concluded my questions or comments, and I turn it back over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor Fears.
Councilwoman McCandless.
Mr. City Manager, can you just explain for the general public what an at-risk contract means?
Yes. What that means is this contractor will provide the city with a project budget, and any amount that would exceed that amount, the contractor would be at risk of incurring that. So the city knows going into this contract what our guaranteed price is going to be, and then the contractor is responsible for any cost overruns above and beyond that amount.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes.
Number six, Carries. That brings us to public hearings. Number one, this is new information only. Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 10900 East Truman Road from I-1 Industrial, C-2 General Commercial, and R-12 Two-Family Residential to I-1 Industrial. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on January 28th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This applicant seeks to build a structure for secured vehicles at this Refuge Collection business, recognizing that the property is divided up into four different parcels. They wanted to consolidate all those parcels into one. One of those parcels has several different zoning, a C-2 and an R-12 zoning. This is primarily an I-1 district, and so the goal here is to do a corrective rezoning to I-1, and I have no new information to provide.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. Madam City Clerk, will you read Bill 25014?
25-014, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from Districts I-1 Industrial, C-2 General Commercial, and R-12 Two-Family Residential to District I-1 Industrial for the property at 10900 East Truman Road. Second reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
You don't have your camera on, sir. There we go.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Perkins.
Yes. Ordinance passes, leads us to the second public hearing. Again, new information only. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 336 North Hocker Avenue from I-1 Industrial to R-6 Single Family Residential. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered on January 28th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. The applicant here wishes to rehabilitate a legally non-conforming single-family structure that is currently zoned I-1, and they wanted to convert that to an R-6 zoning. Important to note, staff has recognized that there's a large section of properties along this block that are also I-1, so they all do need corrective rezoning. State of city staff is working on that as a city-initiated rezoning. However, the applicant here is working on an accelerated schedule, so chose to move forward with this individually. I have no new information to provide.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Arroyo. Madam City Clerk, will you read 25-015?
25-015, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the property at 336 North Hocker Avenue. Second reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Ordinance Carries. This brings us to our first full public hearing, only full public hearing. I will... Madam City Clerk, will you read the public hearing?
A full public hearing for a retail selling of intoxicating liquor by the Drink License for Harvey's Happy Hour that will be located at 10129 East US 40 Highway. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. This location first operated as a tavern back in 2010. It was called Harvey's back then, was sold to a new owner in 2018, became Harvey's Neon Bar. We have a new owner who has come into the picture and intends to operate as Harvey's Happy Hour, and they are seeking this retail selling of intoxicating liquor, essentially going to operate it the same way that it has been for many years. There is one church and school within 300 feet as well as residential. Because of that, it does require city council approval. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Skinnell. I'll open up this public hearing. This is a full public hearing, so if anyone is here who wants to speak for or against, we will start with those who would want to speak against this, this ordinance, please come forward. Not seeing anyone in the galley to come forward. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Please come and state your name and...
My name is Orin Gotro, and myself and my partner, David Erickson, purchased the Harvey's Happy Hour, and it's been open for, I think, 77 years now, and it's been a great neighborhood bar, and, and we don't have any problems, get along with the community, and hire people, you know, support taxes, and like to keep it open if possible.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor or against? Hearing none. I will declare this public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Ordinance Carries. That leaves us to our second readings. Madam City Clerk?
25-013, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat for Timber Creek Ranch. Fifth plat generally located north of Bunshu and Old Mill Road in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Ordinance passes. Brings us to the first readings.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fears?
The first, 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 first reading up is 25-016. I wish to make an amendment to that to clarify some language. The opening paragraph, or the summary of the, of the ordinance is, needs to be amended so that it says, instead of saying, "An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of no more," it should say, "An ordinance authorizing the borrow, borrowing of not to exceed $50,000," and then go on from there.
That was in form of a motion?
It was.
Second.
Of motion and second. Any discussion on the change?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I can just make a clarification, Councilmember Fears said $50,000. If I'm correct, it's $50 million. So I just wanted to clarify that, so the motion is correct on the audio.
That, that is correct. Sorry, I didn't mean, I misstated that. I'll remember, but that wasn't really the part of the, the, that we're changing, so.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification, Mayor. It is $50 million, not $50,000. Any discussion regarding the, the changing of the language? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Amendment Carries. Madam City Clerk, will you read the new amendment?
25-016, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $50 million from the Missouri Development Finance Board to finance certain project costs for the city, approving the form of and authorizing the execution of a financing agreement with the Missouri Development Finance Board and prescribing other matters relating thereto. First reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Proceed. Yes, please, thank you.
25-017, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a monetary donation to the George Owens Nature Park to establish a butterfly garden and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19561. First reading. 25-018, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the U.S. Department of Agriculture's GUS Shoemaker Nutrition Incentive Program through a recipient award from the Mid-America Regional Council and sub-recipient Cultivate KC, which allocates $11,992.50 to the City of Independence, Missouri for nutrition incentives for the Double-Up Food Bucks Program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance 19561. First reading. 25-019, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from Districts R-12 Two-Family Residential to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1009 North Keiger Road. First reading.
Well, that concludes the first reading. That brings us to council member's comments. Start with Councilman Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just a couple of things. Mr. City Manager, earlier tonight, a citizen speaker brought up the marijuana sales tax, and I believe it was stated that it was used for square redevelopment. Could you kind of talk about that, if there's any truth to that?
Yes, I'd be glad to. So when the marijuana sales tax was approved by the voters, a emphasis or restriction was placed on that for public safety purposes, and the council, though not in the ballot language, made clear their intent that the initial proceeds of that sales tax would be utilized to address the facility needs of the Independence Police Department. Now, part of the question we always get when we talk about relocating any facilities is, what are you going to do with that old space? Are you going to leave an empty building behind? Are you going to demolish it? What's going to go into its place? So a portion of the marijuana sales tax revenue has been used on one of the project-focused areas of reshaping the square, which is the redevelopment plan specific, for the square, specifically focused on the area currently occupied by the Independence Police Department headquarters, in the event that our general obligation bond, question one, is approved on April 8th, so that we have redevelopment plans in place for that site and don't either leave a vacant building or a gaping hole in its place.
Okay, thank you. One other question, or just a statement. You know, I, I, I've heard from a lot of people, you know, that, to make sure that the geo-bond, the monies are used where they're supposed to, and I know that by state statute, we have to. But in the interest of even more transparency beyond that, I want to bring up the idea of a citizen oversight committee for it. I don't know if that's been discussed at all. I haven't heard any discussion. So if it does pass and, and on April the 8th, I would like you to have a resolution ready for a study session for us to discuss that.
I can do that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Fears?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of comments to follow up along the same line of what Councilman Stewart commented on, relative to the, the making sure that the bond funds, if it passes, if the pass would be used accordingly as, as planned. I just want to remind everyone that we put in the, in a resolution back the first of the year that the city council was to get a full report once a year, that quarterly, the Audit and Finance Committee would get a full report on what had been accomplished that quarter. And in addition, I think there is an expectation that, that reports would, those reports would also go to the various committees over, on the different sales taxes that we have, like, you know, public safety sales tax or street sales tax, those parks, parks tax. So I think that, you know, I, it is well going to be represented. I think maybe we could clarify it, as Councilman Stewart has said, to make sure that, that it is reported out to those committees. I would, I would kind of hate to see us set up a whole new committee, but when we already have those committees in place. But we can have that discussion, hopefully, following the April 8th vote. The other thing I wanted to mention, there was discussion about a, from a citizen about forensic audit. Not exactly sure what a forensic audit is, but I do want to remind the council and the citizens that we just received our audit. We get audited every year, and we just received that audit at the last Audit and Finance Committee meeting, and it was a, a, an audit that basically said that everything is being done as it's supposed to be done in, in the City of Independence financial records. So I guess, you know, I feel pretty good that we're doing things the way we're supposed to be doing when a third-party auditor comes in and tells us that, yes, you're doing it as it's supposed to be done under, under generally accepted accounting principles. So I just want to remind the citizens of that, that that, that is in place, and it's important that we see that audit on a regular basis. And, Mr. Mayor Protem, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Vought?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A recent news story highlighted the closure of the Clarion Point Hotel, bringing attention to the ongoing efforts to address the issues in our community. I have received quite a bit of positive feedback, including an email from a pleased resident regarding recent closures of the hotels in the 4th District. She stated, "A noticeable decrease in police activity in her neighborhood, and also there was a drop in suspicious activity." This response underscores the community's appreciation for our efforts to enhance the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I would like to thank city staff, particularly Director, Community Development Director Tom Skinnell, Health Director Christina Hynen, Director of Finance Melissa Cabrera, the Independence Police Department, and Charlie DeSalle, the Assistant City Manager, for their dedicated efforts regarding these hotels throughout the city, including the recent closures of the Budget Inn and the Executive Inn on 40 Highway. These hotels did not maintain compliance with city ordinances, which coupled with an increase in police calls for service, ultimately led to their closure. This situation was unsustainable, and I truly appreciate the collaborative work between the departments. Your dedication and teamwork have made a significant impact. Thank you guys again for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Is that all? Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have two things. I was able to go to the Independence School District Achievement Awards last week at William Crispin High School, so I was back in my old high school that has changed a lot. And I want to congratulate the eighth-grade award recipients and all the McCoy Award winners from all of our high schools. And then, two weeks ago, the Independence Arts Council met and is back together. And we had a really good meeting, and we are looking into things like participating in the 2026 Parade of Hearts. So it was a good meeting. It was good to have everybody back. Art is important, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Couple of things. We had yet another house fire in Independence, so thank you to our firefighters for the work that they do to keep us safe. Just a reminder for everyone to think about their evacuation plans, think about their smoke detectors. It's important that people get out because that leads to the safety of our firefighters as well. And so just encouraging people to think about spring cleaning includes testing your batteries. We've seen a couple of big tornadoes in, in the state of Missouri, and I want to just appreciate our emergency preparedness team. In my neighborhood, we put together an emergency response plan as a neighborhood, so who has a generator if somebody needs their medications refrigerated, who has medical expertise, who has chainsaws, et cetera, so that we can think ahead if we have an emergency situation so that our neighborhood can be part of that response. I know that Sam Morris and the emergency preparedness team would come and talk to any neighborhood if they would like to put together a plan like that, because we all have to be part of taking care of community. I want to be sure we addressed the question that Mr. Morgan brought forward with his pictures of green light dispensary. The photos that you brought us are of signs that are controlled by the Missouri Department of Transportation, so the City of Independence does not have any control over these signs at all. We don't control what goes on them, when they go up, when they come down. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to take care of that issue for you, but if you see me afterwards, I will give you the contact information for MoDOT, and we'll give you the right people to talk to. Okay. I want to remind everybody that we still have tours coming up of the Independence Police Department. The geo-bond is a really important conversation. If you want any other information, everyone up here would be happy to answer questions, come and speak, but I really encourage you to come to the department and take a look at how we've tried to patch it together for several years and the things that we can and cannot fix, so that you can have the information you need to make your upcoming choices. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Rowland? You're muted, sir.
Did something happen? Let's see.
We can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, Mr. City Manager, thank you. Communications Department, thank you. Steve, for his video, he does a great job there. Thank you. For Christina Hydenen, for her work in the animal services. We have gotten six animals adopted in the videos that we've done highlighting the animals at the animal shelter, and so it's because of the work of all these folks here that we've got that done. And I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and all of your staff, for all the work they of your staff for all the work they do. It takes all of us to do that, and we've got about one out of three have been adopted. So we highlight three every video, and about one out of three, but we've still got lots of dogs, and we've got a couple of dogs that have been a year. So please, 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 come out, take a look, talk to Christina or the Animal Services Group, and they will help you find an animal that will cuddle up and watch TV with you, and I'm sure they'll probably help you with your popcorn. Anyway, with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That leaves me just to go over just a couple of things that were spoken this, this evening regarding council, or citizen comments. Crystal Avenue Bridge, we discussed that several weeks ago. That is a unique situation where we do have the funding for that, and we have put that out, and I'm going to look over to our deputy city manager, three times, four times over the past several years regarding replacement of the deck for that. Because of COVID, COVID had extremely reduced, extremely, extremely reduced the mid-to-small-size contractors that could do those types of works. Those bids came, went out, and they came back non-responsive. So the strategy moving forward is rolling that into a bigger and larger contract that would get more bites at the apple for this work. Kentucky Avenue Bridge, I will begin to pull my hair out as I talk about this over and over again. This is a unique situation, and the Cliff Notes version of it, that is controlled half by Kansas City, half by City of Independence, and we, as a council, voted to approve a contract which was not picked up on the Kansas City side in behalf, held several meetings. Councilwoman McCandless was a part of that, with the city manager, myself, and the former deputy city manager, Adam Norris, in the city manager's office, Brian Platt in Kansas City, where he told us basically to go pound sand. So we are moving forward as best as we can with this situation. So continue your efforts. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, through your office, to keep working on those efforts. A state-led audit, that's a, a issue that has already been done. I would encourage those individuals to, or reach out to the state auditor's office. There was an audit done some years ago that I'm sure is sitting somewhere on their shelf. So that has already been done, and I would suggest to go look there for that. Other than that, everybody have a good St. Patrick's Day. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I do. I think there's a few other issues that were raised tonight that merit just a little bit of follow-up information. I do want to invite the public. If you're not able to attend any of the neighborhood meetings that we've presented so far, next Monday night, we are going to use a portion of your study session to have another overview of the general obligation bond issue. So if you can be here at 6 o'clock, that would be great. If not, please watch on City 7, or those will be available online, as are all of our meetings. But one of the, the comments that was made tonight was about, you know, the voter-approved sales taxes. I will tell you, in preparing for that study session, that the construction inflation rate for the last 30 years, the average per-year inflation rate is 3.9%. I can assure you, our sales tax growth has not matched that 3.9% per year. So that's math. More cost-to-do projects, less money coming in equals not able to keep up with the needs in this community, which is why we're trying to mimic and model our peer cities in pursuing a general obligation bond, which is the way they have addressed their infrastructure needs. You know, it was mentioned that tax increment finance projects are city-backed. That was the case with the Falls at Cracker Net Creek Tax Increment Financing Project. That is not true of other city-backed projects. And in fact, the fiscal discipline that this council has shown has led to a 44% reduction in the number of tax increment finance projects on the book, including eliminating eight of those projects within the last five years alone. That resulted last year, in the last fiscal year, of an $82 million drop in the amount of tax increment financing debt on our books, which was a 33% reduction. And we have eliminated all, all general fund subsidies for tax increment finance projects. So whereas that was a problem for this city over 10 years ago, that is no longer an issue that we're battling through. And just, you know, the comments about tightening our belt, it's really fun to say words like waste, fraud, and abuse. I get their buzzwords in today's jargon, but they lack a basis in reality here. We've worked really hard with this council to consolidate departments, to reduce city staffing, to reduce some of our legacy expenditure programs, like retiree insurance, while still honoring our obligations and commitments that we feel like we have relative to the people who earned that benefit, but doing so in a way that was more financially sustainable. One of the many examples I could give of the benefits that has yielded is that when I was hired as manager in 2016, our general fund reserve, which is like our savings account, was 4.7%. We're now at 17.4%. So yes, it's always imperative that we try to tighten our belts, but the belt tightening has been happening for the better part of a decade, and now we're trying to do what our other peer cities have done for much of the last 15-plus years, which is utilize a general obligation bond to take care of our major capital projects. With that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Well, with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned.